I'd like to bring the Beaver Creek Township Zoning Commission meeting to order. This is September the first, 2022. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jeff Brown?
Here.
Mr. Robert Geist?
Here.
Ms. Anne Saltman?
Here.
And Ms. Kristen Morton?
Here.
Okay.
So, yeah, on the agenda, which I guess we should start with an agenda approval very quickly.
We just need to see what it is, yes. So, the agenda brought to us today has case number 831, some minutes from our last, or from the June meeting and from the August 4th meeting. Any additions or changes to the presented agenda?
No.
Okay, that being said, the motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
One second. Mr. Jeff Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Robert Geist?
Yes.
Ms. Anne Saltman?
Yes.
Ms. Kristen Morton?
Yes.
Okay, so the next business of order is making certain that everything was presented to the public as a public hearing notice, and I see that that was attached to the documents that you gave to us, and we appreciate that. Now, ready for staff report?
I'll quickly.
Wait, I'm sorry, any conflicts of interest on the cases, case that's presented?
No.
Okay, thank you, and we have a quorum.
I will start quickly with the public notice. So, the purpose of the hearing is so that the zoning commission may review and act on a proposal by the Community Development and Risk Department to reclassify several parcels into an industrial slash commercial planned unit development, what we're calling a PUDIC. The list of parcels considered for rezoning is presented below. I won't read them, that will take a little bit, a little bit more time than I'd like, but they are available for the camera and for everyone to look at in the public notes as well. The parcels are located within the Beaver Park Business Park, located at the intersection of Dayton-Zenia Road and Orchard Lane, and this action is considered a zoning map, and then after you scroll down, so.
Well, okay. You'll keep going to the next page, please.
So, I'll give my staff report very quickly. It'll mirror very much what you've already heard in the meeting, which we discussed this about bringing it to regional planning. So, the Beaver Creek Township Community Development and Risk Department is seeking to rezone several parcels which are currently included in the Beaver Park Industrial Plan Unit Development, IPUD, and some adjacent parcels not included in the IPUD into a new zoning designation. This designation, PUD Industrial slash Commercial, or PUDIC, is meant to expand the allowable uses within the business park area. The parcels being proposed for rezoning are shown below, and again, we'll show a map here shortly that gives you a visual of all the parcels you might want to locate. The purpose of the proposed rezoning is primarily to expand the list of permitted and conditional uses of the zoned parcels. When this business park was originally zoned, it was the first PUD created by the township. The list of allowable uses is relatively limited, especially when you compare it to the full list of industrial uses in our zoning rendition. Additionally, the list of allowable uses, as well as other controlling language, is unclear due to some missing or incomplete records. The governing documents for the original zoning cannot currently be located by staff, even following a records digitization project. It's not to say they're not there, but during the middle of this process, which saw us ship basically every single zoning case file and VZA file to them, we have not yet been able to locate it in the sorting process that we have to do after getting it all back as kind of just an info dump of pages. We have to then sort through those, so that's where we're at now. This uncertainty can be cleared up by applying rezoning to the parcels and clearly defining the list of permitted and conditional uses, as well as other controlling factors like setbacks, screenings, fencing, all the other things that we need to regulate as well. This proposed rezoning began when the current owner of the remaining undeveloped parcels, or the majority of the remaining undeveloped parcels in the IPUD, Mr. Matt Arnovitz, approached the township with a plan to renovate the existing vacant, used to be a driving range at the southeast corner of the PUD. So, the proposed plan would include uses not currently allowable according to the controlling document for the PUDs that exist now. This led to a series of discussions. I met with Matt over a couple of different meetings where we discussed what his plans were. We basically put together this list together of, hey, you know, what uses do you think might be included in your project? And then we made some additions and corrections added to that original list, and that's what you have in front of you. So, the proposed list of allowable permitted and conditional uses is included. Again, we'll go through that, I'm sure, for consideration. There's also an Exhibit A which was included in your packet, which details additional conditions and regulations, like we were discussing the setbacks and things like that. Parking, screening, in fact, we even did, we put a requirement that uses that board of the creekside trail will screen the creekside trail. That's new, that's something that we thought was a, something missing from the previous zoning, so. And yeah, if you could scroll down a little bit more. So, the decision to include parcels which were not originally part of the existing IPUD, that was proposed by staff. To both expand potential uses on those parcels and to match the adjacent parcels, I think when you see the map, these parcels make logical sense to be combined with the other in one kind of block unit, if you will. They're very much part of the business park. I would assume that when it was originally zoned, that these were not controlled by Mr. Arnovitz, who was the originator of the PUD, and that's why they weren't included. Having reached out with letters and such to the different businesses that would be kind of rezoned, we did not hear any concerns or questions or even any contact really from them, so we expect this, again, it's expanding uses, so we don't expect it to be an issue for the existing businesses there. Additionally, this helps, and again, this is kind of what we're talking about, to create a character zone of industrial and commercial uses. It's a term that's being used more and more frequently in kind of zoning parlance. It's designed to evoke, you know, a sense of place, right? The Beaver Park Industrial Park is a place, and so the zoning should kind of match that versus some of the patchwork parcel-by-parcel zoning that used to be the norm. So, we have a couple of desired outcomes that staff wants to achieve with this rezoning. Again, creating a character zone of industrial and commercial uses that expands the list of permitted and conditional uses within that zone. We want to strengthen the clarity of zoning regulations by replacing incomplete legislation with new legislation, which clearly defines requirements like setbacks, screening, fencing, stormwater management. We want to strengthen the ability of the zoning inspector to review new proposed uses and building configurations through the specific site plan approval process. So, when folks come in in PUD, they need to present a specific site plan for their proposed use, and we believe that now the new controlling Exhibit A specifically will allow us to put more protection in place if need be, again, things like setbacks and screening and such. And finally, we want to provide the flexibility offered by planning unit development zoning to encourage the development of the vacant lots that still remain. As it was created in 1999, or I'm sorry, 89 was when it was originally zoned, and there are still a couple of vacant parcels. I don't necessarily, I can't say that it's because the list, the list of permitted uses is not expanded as we're hoping, but certainly, I think, expanding that list of uses allows for additional users to potentially come in and make their home in Beaver Park Industrial Park. So, the goal is eventually to have all parcels sold and, you know, developed, so we think this will move the goalpost toward that goal. So, staff does recommend approval of the proposed rezoning, and additionally, the rezoning was recommended by Green County Regional Planning, their full commission, in Resolution This rezoning will allow for a wide range of inoffensive uses while also clarifying zoning regulations not related to allowable uses. So, I want to just scroll down a little bit, I want to show you that map that we're talking about that should visualize all the parcels. Here we have the application done by the Community Development Risk Department. The list of parcels again, and then this is the map, so maybe just zoom out just one So, you can see that it encompasses basically from creekside trail as the southern border, Dayton-Zenia Road is the northern border, Orchard Lane as the western border, and the eastern border is the township-owned parcel which contains the road and maintenance department buildings. We did not include that in the IPUD. That's expected to remain a township building for quite some time. So, the pieces that were not originally included in the PUD are the ones on the far east. So, basically, everything east of Space Drive, that cul-de-sac down there, and Distribution Drive, as it moves north, that whole road as it gets up to Dayton-Zenia, all those were not originally included in the PUD. However their uses are, everything that already exists in the PUD, warehousing, and there's an auction house, there's some industrial, there's some outdoor storage, but all of those uses fit within kind of a business park environment, so we thought it was not a far leap, rather, to include them in the PUD. And yeah, if you could scroll down just a little bit. So, the next piece, and I know this is a, one, up one for me.
Sorry.
This is the Exhibit A, which talks about the different, these would be requirements for any parcel within the PUD, and these are what we're talking about when we're speaking about kind of shoring up the regulations for setbacks and things like that. Now, typically, we try to tie them to their base zoning unit, like their underlying base zoning, if you will. So, I'll read through these very quickly. So, the first one, any specific site plans submitted for approval within the PUD shall comply with any and all yard requirements set forth in Article 1409 of the Township Resolution. Yard requirements may be reduced during the specific site plan approval process if such reduction is approved by both the zoning commission and township trustees. So, they will start with the typical base zoning for industrial in terms of yard requirements, and then should that not be feasible based on the existing parcels that exist now, they will just need to make that known during the specific site plan process, and it can be modified. Number two, signage for parcels within the PUD will adhere to Article 20.09 of the Township Zoning Resolution for size requirements and to any other relevant sections of Article 20 for other general signage requirements. Again, tying the sign regulations back to the underlying controlling language in the zoning resolution, which is Article 20. So, parking, number three, parking for parcels will adhere to Article 18.15 and 18.16 of the Township Zoning Resolution, which again are sections that deal with the number of parking spaces you need to have for a given use, ADA, compliance, all those, all those rules. Number four, screening and buffering for parcels within the PUD shall adhere to Article 18.17 of the Township Zoning Resolution. In addition, any specific site plans submitted for approval within the PUD shall include screening between any proposed use and the creekside trail light path, which has to be approved as part of the specific site plan. So, not only do they need to provide screening, but they need to provide adequate screening, so that can be, you know, negotiated during the site plan. What does adequate screening mean? Number five, any specific site plan shall meet any conditions placed by the Green County engineer and/or Green County Soil and Water Conservation related to stormwater management. Such conditions shall be provided by each respective agency during redevelopment meetings and must be documented by the zoning administrator. So, that is putting the onus on us to say, what are, what if any conditions must be met to meet stormwater requirements? We will provide that in writing in any PUD site plan for this PUD. Number six, parcels and land uses within the PUD which have been developed prior to being rezoned to PUDIC shall be considered to conform to the zoning resolution. If a new use or building configuration poses on these conforming parcels, then that land use configuration must conform to the requirements of the new zoning. So, basically, we don't like to use this term, but colloquially, we call it grandfather. Grandfather didn't. Anything that exists there now will not become a non-conforming use if it does not align with this. Now, we've worked very carefully to make sure, we don't believe that's going to be the case. Everything that exists there should fall within the allowable uses, but this is kind of a catch-all, you know, maybe there's, especially in the I zoning, the ones that are joining the PUD, we want to make sure this won't cause them any issues, and this is the way we think we can make that. But if they, if those uses, you know, decide to change, right, they sell the building and a new use comes in, then that use must conform to the PUD uses, yes. And again, they would have to do a specific site plan approval for that use. Even if it was the same building, it'd be an easy site plan approval, because it already exists, but that would be when we could talk about what use it is and approve it by those kinds of things. And finally, parcels and land uses within the PUD must conform to any and all relevant rules and regulations within the Township Zoning Resolution, which are not specifically mentioned in its resolution, but are determined by the zoning administrator to apply to such parcels and land uses. Such rules and regulations could include, but are not limited to ingress and egress, outdoor storage, property maintenance, accessory structures, fencing, et cetera. So, that is basically giving the zoning administrator some additional review, because the PUD, we're aware that there are some drainage concerns, like the, or I don't even want to say concerns, I would say the drainage configuration as it stands is subject to change from the Green County engineer, and so apart from that, we would want to also, like if it were a conditional use, say, we'd want to be able to go in and talk to them about, hey, what ingress and egress is needed, not just for zoning, but for fire safety, all these other. So, that allows me to exercise a little bit more review control over anything that's coming into the PUD. So, those are kind of the supplementing regulations, if you will, that we think will allow this expansion of uses to not result in kind of the wild west where, you know, anything goes. That's not our goal, and we think this approach is better. So, then we move into the meat, which is the list of uses. And what we provided to you was essentially, it's every use outside of residential and agricultural. This is a table that exists in our zoning resolution as an appendix. How we kind of developed this list was we looked at what uses were allowable in I-1 and II, and then B2, B3, B4, and O1, which are kind of more commercial districts. And what went through and looked at, does it logically make sense in this area? A lot of them did, some of them did not, and some of them were, which we marked as conditional uses, which again, I want to be clear, conditional uses are typically meant to be allowed with conditions. That is the purpose, they're not meant to be denied. And this would give us some additional review over, like we talked about, ingress egress, if they were going to be, if there was going to be some sort of noxious chemical or something that was part of the use, how would it be stored and managed? Those kind of things would have us lean toward a conditional use versus permitted. I know you have had this list to review for actually about a month now, a little under a month, I guess, and it was sent out again, so were there any questions about the list of permitted and conditional uses that we wanted to go over?
Well, some of them are just not logical to me, but that doesn't mean that it's not okay. Did you have any?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, no, go ahead, and then I'll do.
There just seems to be some, in my own mind, some inconsistencies in whatever the logic was in some of the selections here. So, you don't permit asphalt or asphalt products, but you do permit concrete as an example. And I know there are different kinds of materials, but they are both potentially emitting something in the atmosphere, whether it be dust or fumes or whatever. So, I'm wondering why one was permitted and the other is not.
So, in our understanding of the business, which I won't, I won't, I'm an expert in asphalt or concrete, you know, batch plants, but asphalt is significantly more noxious to create than concrete in terms of the smell. That's the main thing. Concrete, yes, it can produce some dust, however, the Phillips plant, which is essentially a concrete batch plant as well, is on Heller Drive, it's very close, so we don't think it's necessarily outside the realm of, what's the word, you know, acceptability for that area. That was the logic.
There's nothing around the Phillips plant.
It's right next to a church and some other things, yeah. The building is right next to Phillips plant. One houses a church, one houses, and there's manufacturers along Heller Lane. They're not right up next to it, but the churches, those are right up next to the Phillips plant. Now, the concrete is right in the middle, right? You've got, you know, several hundred feet between the border of Phillips and where it works. Some of those ones are more, again, we were trying to be more permissive than not, but I am definitely open to suggestions of, hey, you know, we don't feel this is comfortable. That's kind of what the work of the zoning commission is, so. Concrete plants, I can see arguments both ways, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
So, we can go down this list, but before we do that, I need to back up to Exhibit A that talks about the grandfathering and the use of, I guess, we go back to the map first.
Sure.
Okay, let's go back to the map first. Do you have questions about the map?
Well, I know that the township buildings that are not included, what is that currently zoned over there on the, I guess that'd be the east end?
Let's pull it up.
Why weren't they included in that? I mean, it just seemed logical to.
Through the whole city.
Yeah, I mean.
Looks like there's probably a geopolitical boundary there.
This is actually, this has been annexed to the city.
Yeah.
I think he was on the other side.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The township.
Sure, the township garage right there.
Yeah.
Those ones?
Right, so that's I-1, and what's the third?
O-1.
Or O-1's office, and then I-1.
The, the goal is that we're, we know, or we believe very strongly that for a long period of time, the township building is not going to change uses. So, to include it in an industrial park when we know it's going to be institutional slash governmental, doesn't make sense to us, because we don't expect it to ever turn into an industrial use while the township's still operating there.
But there's a daycare that's on that that we, is not industrial, but we're including that.
Well, again, industrial, commercial is the designation for the PUD.
So, what, so there's, so.
And I wouldn't say that the town, I guess in our mind, the township maintenance facility doesn't fit either industrial or commercial.
And then in that front building, is that a city today? Is that still township?
That is actually owned by the township, but I believe it's housing the Beaver Creek Wellness Association, so.
Because I had thought at one time that the city tried to annex that or something, or take it from Beaver Creek Township or something, the city of Beaver Creek.
Not that, not that, but. But yeah, where the township administration building and fire station is, yes, that was annexed by the city of Beaver Creek.
So, the rationale for that, the plot is based on not so much zoning, but ownership?
No, I'd say land use, I mean, I would say land use. If I could rezonate, in fact, we are working on an institutional governmental zoning district for like Wright Path and some other areas that exist within township. I would choose to rezonate as industrial, or institutional governmental. So, once that is available, that's the plan, so I would not want to rezonate to this PUDIC and then rezonate to institutional governmental shortly after.
And do they own all the way to the, I assume that's township land all the way to the bike path?
Yes.
Yep, that and township.
And so regardless of whether or not we can find the original zoning for the daycare, this will blanket that, and they'll look grandfathered across in, and there won't be any problems with how the, you call it conformity?
Yes.
So, they won't be considered non-conforming?
Correct.
However, I think where we left at the last time and what our homework was going to be is, if this was regardless, a zoning change that, like we did with the business district, and we just said, these are the things that we would like to do because it cleans up zoning, that would be one thing, but right now, we're having a landowner kind of say, we kind of want to do this all now, right? Is that what we're trying to do, is to be?
Well, so, the conversation began from that, but it evolved into, hey, we think this is an opportunity to face what we, what we see as spotty or unclear zoning. So, it started with this back parcel, the driving range, used to be a driving range. Can we rezonate, or can we redo the original PUD? That's how it originally started. Let's modify the original PUD. And as we were looking at that process, we realized that would be much more involved and difficult than simply rezoning it to.
So, what, PUDIC is something that is normal in zoning language? It's something that's done?
Sure, an industrial, commercial area is absolutely something that's very common.
We've just never done it in the township.
Yeah, we don't have any permanent zoning districts there. I would say that's likely due to the very limited amount of commercial activity in the township. You see it along US 35 and really nowhere else.
Okay. So, then separating that out, the complexity that we found was that the daycare was there and there's kids there, right? I mean, that's kind of the place we are now, looking at that list of things. Whether it's logical or not, based on just a zoning change, what is it going to impact those kids? And that's kind of where I was when I was looking at this list, but then I got, my wiring went down where Jeff was going, where whether there's kids in that daycare or not, some of it just didn't make sense. Is that where you were with it? Okay, so how do you want to go about this? Do you want to go line by line, or do you want to go with this one stuck out to me?
Why don't we just start and talk all the way down and figure out where, where we have questions? I mean, we can say line by line, but I don't think we're going to have questions on every one.
Right, okay.
Can I recommend, before we get into that?
Yes.
We would want to open it up for any public comments.
You're right, keeping me on track here, so we usually listen to the staff before we do anything, and now we would love to hear from the applicant, but you are the applicant, correct? So, the rest is then do we go ahead and open public portion so that we can hear from him?
Yeah, anybody for or answer.
Right, okay, let's do that then. I'll go ahead and open the public portion of this meeting, and so anyone that is for this application, we'd love to hear from you. Would you just say your name, your address, and?
Would you mind stepping over there?
And step over there, right? Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you all for being here this evening. I know volunteer time is tough, and I appreciate it. My name is Matthew Arnovitz, I live at 753 Atkins Circle in Dayton, Ohio, 45429. I have been the applicant and one of the owners of this property since the inception, so I was here in the building you're talking about in 1989 when we did the original PUD. And the problem we've had with the PUD has been that PUDs are very, can be restrictive, and there were so many times that we've had people that have come to us that have said they'd like to put something in, but because it wasn't in one of the specific uses, that's considered a major modification of the PUD, and it's a tremendous lengthy process. So, it ruled out a lot of people coming forward. I don't know how many, you know, there's about 100 acres that we developed in this park. You know, we helped put in Orchard Lane, we built Space Drive, we built Beaver Park Drive. You know, originally, the four buildings in the upper corner, we built those. I still own the building at 797 to 801 Space Drive, and we have one lot on Space Drive in the former driving range that we're trying to figure out what we do with and how we develop. So, that's when I came to Max and said, you know, the zoning here is really a mess, and it's been a mess because over the years, I've been called to provide the letters because it hasn't just been since the scanning, some of this has been messed up or missing for a long time. So, I think there, there were four separate. Uh, so, I think there, there were four separate PUDs done, one for the four buildings, one for the section, like Beaver Park, Space Drive, and straight down, and then the portion was another PUD that went on where, uh, Orchard Lane came through. So, they were three separate, they were, tried to mirror each other, but over time, nobody, I won't say nobody followed, we, we, a lot of it was followed, but we were selling lots and people were building, so, like, originally, if the first hundred feet or fifty feet was supposed to be office zoning, and then we had some companies that came, they had their offices in front, and they had, you know, it was just, it got to be very difficult. So, that's when I came to Max and said, you know, is there something we can do so that when we begin to market, it's important that people know exactly what they can and can't do on the property, and that they don't want to wait six months of public hearings or invest the time and effort if it's a mess. Or if it's, they want to know if it's conditional use or not. So, that's why we started through this process, and then I think Max realized that there were, the surrounding areas were also, um, in a state of not really knowing what exactly everything was, and, you know, that's not a good place to be, cause I think the answer from a township or a zoning standpoint is if it's not clear, then it's a major modification you need to come in, so, and that delays the process. So, I'm here, I'm welcome to answer any questions. I did not know about the screening, Max, on the bike path side, you know, that's, I have to figure that out because there's a detention pond relocation that's going there and how that fits, but, you know, we're just trying to minimize some of the costs going in upfront, so, you know, I'm here, as you are hearing some of this for the first time.
I looked at it, I scanned over it, and it's, um, he can help you with it, but it's basically fencing or dense forest, or dense agricultural, whatever you call it, buffer.
Well, man, they've already fenced, we've fenced it on the bike path now.
And the construction of that wasn't clear, what, what had, what the materials were.
Yeah, if adequate, to be clear, if adequate screening, screening already exists, great, the condition's satisfied.
Okay.
It would be if, if the screening was determined to not be adequate according to code, they just have to make sure it was, so.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we've always talked about that perhaps we would want to have a, in the southeast corner, there's already a little section there that connects in that if someone wanted to bike into the park to work, they could, as opposed to coming out of Orchard Lane, uh, but that's, that's not why we're here.
Right, right.
I mean, the, the primary thing is, I would like to make certain that the childcare and some of that stuff can go there, cause they, it provides, it's been there for a long time and it provides a necessary need. You know, there's a credit union on the corner of distribution in Dayton, Zenia, that has been there from very early on, and I, I, you know, hopefully that would still be permitted to be here, you know, not just grandfathered, but it's a permitted use, and I think that's in there, so I think that's why we've combined some of the office uses, as well as commercial uses, as well as some of the industrial to make it more clear.
Uh, you know, I appreciate that, that, that was one place I was just really hung up the last time I heard it, um, and I'm, who knows, concerned about the protection of those kids.
Sure.
With the conditional uses, let alone the allowable uses, so, that's the only place that I am, but I'm, and I was also concerned whether or not it was going to be grandfather clause in, because if it wasn't, I was concerned about non-conformity and what that meant to that, that business owner.
Absolutely. And I will say that, uh, the first time I did the zoning in 1989, um, it was contentious. People were so afraid of what was going to be built here, cause this was all farmland, this was a change in character, and people were very concerned. Now, almost all of it's been built, I don't think the concern was ever as justified as people got, you know, you know, we have a fire station, we have the city maintenance, the city Beaver Creek's maintenance garage, you know, almost everything is known what's going to happen here, except for this one little section, cause everything else is already built.
So, you know, whenever, there's change over time, and so I think the character and how that presents is, um, it's kind of the way now, but what we don't see also becomes important, and that's the environmental influence that it's having, and so looking at each one of these from a perspective of, um, impact on health is where my brain is.
Well, absolutely, and we don't mind anything that causes, you know, detriment to the community or a neighbor, you know, I don't think, I mean, the land pricing, I mean, the, the large block where the driving range is will probably be kept in one block, that's not going to be subdivided. That would take a major modification even subdivided, so we'll keep that in one section. There may be multiple buildings there, but it's going to be kept in a character that's going to provide business opportunity, and, and because it's going to be multi-tenant or multi-bones, you know, and the land cost that we see there, it's not going to attract what I call, you know, the people we don't want. It's going to be, you know, if you look at the character of the businesses that are there, it's all pretty much, you know, top-notch office service, you know, IT and, you know, various things. I guess there's a couple's, uh, HVAC service contractors that are there on both corners, you know.
You got Stanley Steamer, you got Stevens Heating and Air, um, there's a lot of that, where, you know, you have a fleet of vehicles that go into that building every day, there's some, uh, you know, storage, um, almost like store-inlock type area, um...
I mean, Henley Hall is there, and I don't know that currently, I mean, that wasn't, that was all different zoning at the time, I think all those were done individually, so I don't know that Henley Hall would meet the requirements to be in industrial park today, but I think we included those types of uses because, you know, it was important that that's still a community, youth thing, and those aren't bad uses in industrial parks for businesses.
Right, right.
Max, what is the dark purple currently zoned?
Up top there?
No, well, right below there.
That's I-1.
That's I-1?
Yeah.
It continues on into that farmland?
It does, um...
There we go.
It's an interesting zoning designation, and if you, if you zoom out a little bit more, I mean, you can kind of see, I guess, so you see how Glen Thompson Reserve is also zoned I-1?
Yeah.
So, we believe that back when the county controlled zoning, would be the creek township, before we were large enough to do it ourselves, that a large swath was zoned as I-1. Um, you know, obviously Glen Thompson Reserve should not be zoned industrial, right?
Correct.
You know we're working on that. Um, in fact, um, that, that, you know, we, we have the GS-1 and GS-2, um, green space, and one of the things that we'll be doing is rezoning those, so. I wouldn't, I guess what I'm saying is, I wouldn't, if it were my brothers, I wouldn't zone that area I-1 right next to the township building, it's more agricultural in character.
I was just curious, cause I, I didn't see this on it.
So, I understand then why you want to try to do this and to make it easier on your development, all of that, I totally get it. When we do something like this, Max, and we start this new zoning, are we setting a precedence where we would be able to, um, based on how we've gone about this right now from, uh, I-1 to this PUDIC, are there other areas in the township that we would be going out and we didn't want, so now we need to do this again?
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know if I fully understand your question.
So, did you follow those?
Yeah, basically, is there another area in the township that's got the same characteristics that we may be looking at in the future of doing the same thing, if we have to go back and change zoning at some other location in the township?
You know, I don't, besides Valley Springs Farm, which is already zoned as kind of a mixed-use PUD, you know, I don't know that there's really another area in the township that I can identify right now that kind of fits an industrial park characteristic.
So, is that something we would be anticipating then? Is that something that down the road we go, oh, we're going to have all of these little situations like he's talking about? Cause we did, we spent a lot of time trying to go, we're going to add, make this area just for, um, hotels, or this area over here would be simply for, um, um, industrial use. And we spent a lot of time doing that, so would we be setting precedents that we would come back and say, okay, Valley Springs, this is why we're going to do this now?
I, I don't, if I understand your question right, I don't believe so. I think this is, this has a very clear reasoning behind it, um, both the, kind of the angle of fixing some unclear rules that existed from a time, you know, before maybe modern record keepings and other things.
Yeah.
Uh, but then also, it's that character zone, and I, I really, I don't believe there's another area in the township. Now, if someone wanted to come and say, I've got a hundred acres of farmland and I want to turn it into a business park, maybe this zoning might be perfect for that, and we could come to this and say, hey, let's apply as much of this as we can, but I'm not thinking of any other areas in the township.
Okay.
But, yeah, we'd have that, but, so...
All right, all right.
Um, if you have any questions, it may, I won't have to answer anything or provide any more in-depth information I can, if you have any.
Do you guys have anything?
Just a curiosity, do you have one or more potential candidates that are looking at particular businesses in this area?
At this moment, I don't. Uh, it, it, it has been about a, a year, sixteen-month process right now. Originally, there was a detention pond that was planned on part of this driving range acre that was never built. The land is the same land, it's under Phillips, so water doesn't hole in this section, it drains, uh, but we're re, we're officially relocating the detention pond into the Dayton Power and Light Easement that runs on the south part of the property, and that has taken almost a year, fourteen months to accomplish to get the approvals from Dayton Power and Light and Green County and Sorland Water and everybody that has to be involved in that approval process. So, we haven't had any market. I can't put buildings until I have something that I can, we, you know, we're still not there yet, we still have to replat it and show the relocation, or, you know, that on. If, the approvals are in place, but we're not finished, and until we have the zoning, now that we have this done, you know, I, I've worked trying to plan some buildings or plan some concepts, but they're really kind of concept plans, we may build the first building, if someone comes in and says, I need a forty thousand square foot building, you know, you throw the plans up and went in and you go with the market, you know, still under the constraints of the zoning that permits it, but, you know, the market drives a lot of this, not the developers wishes or the, you know, townsfolk's.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
You, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm feeling around the room and say there's probably no one here against the application and general comments, so, is even, okay, so, at this point, I'll just go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting. Um, well, you guys, here we are. Yeah. We're going through it. So, I'll just tell you right now, I like the idea of the PUDIC. I don't have a problem with creating a zone that makes sense, especially when every zoning commission board changes.
Right.
You know what I'm saying, and send in a clear message. I, um, I still care about the environment, what's going on here, whether that daycare is there or not. I still think that. We had requested that, um, regional planning take a look at that and make some sort of recommendations, and their recommendations were...
Approval.
Approval, and they made a few changes, if I understood what it said.
Do you mind scrolling down in that case packet? We do have their letter, if anyone wants to look at that.
By adding more permitted and conditional uses, and maybe that's just what they were trying to say, adding more, did they add more, or what was, by doing this, it adds more?
I think I read it that way.
Okay.
Yeah, no, they did not suggest any additional uses, so, yeah. Um, and, so, they convene on August 23rd to review and vote on this resolution to form a new designation of PUDIC to expand on the allowable uses within the bus, business park. By, so basically, they were explaining what the PUDIC's purpose was in that sentence, and they just voted to recommend approval of what was submitted.
Got it. Um, in that, we talked a little bit about, I had made a request that we consider whether or not there could be some sort of a baseline assessment on, um, the aqua floor and just, just environmental health. I don't, and I remember you saying, well, we need to do that through land use, um, plan, but is this kind of a, oh, let's don't, is this kind of a time when we want to start to do some sort of recommendation of baseline standards?
In terms of making that a condition or part of the zoning?
I see what you're saying.
Or as part of a specific site plan?
Specific site plan.
That's where I think it's going to fall, right?
I think, okay, all right, then you can hush me up at this point, that's fine, just to make sure I'm doing it in the right place and the right order. Okay, now, now I'm ready.
I'm good.
You're good with this list?
I, you know, like, a calendar here, there's, I think, maybe seven vacant parcels remaining in the, uh, second, I think there's fewer, but...
Three.
Yeah, yeah.
Three, is that what you said, three?
Well, I mean, and...
Well, you're right, there's, there's a couple that haven't been built on yet, so there's...
Yeah, I was just looking at the, a while, I'm counting them.
There's five, six on the top that has been vacant for a long time on the daycare.
There's one, and then there's two down there, and then your property.
Three, four, five.
Four, five, and then that corner woods over there, I'm, yeah, down here and there.
It's full, where did the daycare become? I don't know, but...
I don't have an issue with it, because all the owners current have been notified, you've had no response, um, yea or nay, um, you know, it is an industrial area, I mean, an office park area, um, at some point, you know, if they have concerns, they need to pay attention.
Yeah.
And, and I'm not disparaging anybody, but, I mean, looking at the overall map and that parcel, I mean, it's, it makes a lot of sense to me to rezone it all into one, um, PUD that they're asking for, um, you know, it's not our job to protect everybody as far as if they're, if they have concerns, then they should voice those concerns.
Yeah, I mean, we can assume, I think it's fair to assume that if we made the public notice as, as, you know, required by a higher advice code, and someone did not reach out with a concern, I think it's fair for us to assume that, that the concern doesn't exist for those people that were notified, uh, cause how else could it...
And that's kind of what I'm going on, I mean, it was just, you know...
So, is this a, a generic PUDIC that could be mapped elsewhere, or is, or was this specifically tuned to this area?
It's specific to this area, like most PUDs, when you create it, you, you give it its governing uses and...
Right, so you wouldn't remap this to anywhere else, you would start over from...
Yeah, now, I, I might use this as a template.
Sure, sure.
But I could not say, I want to rezone this to PUDIC without any of the supporting documents.
So, this has got a specific character on it for this region, this area?
Yes.
So, that's the question, maybe that's the question I was trying to get at earlier, so a PUDIC, is this, is this, um, list?
Unique to this area.
It's unique to this area, but is that what is seen broadly? That's...
You mean, is the...
Other places?
Yeah, like around the county or country, like...
Yeah, it's for zoning, for zoning.
So, I would say, when you look at, like, for instance, business parks, there's one in Zenia that's pretty, it's basically full, it has a lot of the same uses. Now, I don't believe it contains a daycare, I think that's a, a unique, um, circumstance in ours, usually, I would, you know, usually don't see a daycare right next to, like, well, and I won't say right next to, a couple, you know, a couple addresses down, just like a QPD, uh, you know, light to heavy manufacturing.
Right.
Um, but the rest of these type of uses, yeah, they typically do all merge together, um, you know, business parks are a, they've been common for decades as a way for, for municipalities to say, hey, all these uses that, you know, are going to have semis, that are going to have, um, traffic strain, they should all be in one place for economy scale, right? So, I would, I would characterize this as, yeah, pretty common development where you combine a lot of commercial and industrial uses in one character area.
And then what I'm just understanding you guys say, that...
But it's got a unique characteristic to what's currently there, right?
Currently there, and so it comes...
So, it's been mapped to...
I'll use Valley Springs as an example, if you came back and said we want to do a PUD... If you came back and said, we want to do a PUD IC there, you might start with this list, but we will modify that.
Have plenty of it.
Yeah, right, right, right. Got it.
Can you do PUD legislation? That is unique to that property in which you are resuming to that particular PUD?
You would think I would know that.
It's not, it's not as into as it basically.
It's not.
And that's, it's the double up short of the PUD. They're flexible. But because they're flexible, they are, you know, unique and they have their challenges as well.
And that's different from these other categories, right? Those don't flex. Is that a true statement?
Correct. That's correct. B3, B2, B4, they are listed in the zoning resolution and their uses do not change, unless we modify the zoning resolution.
Okay. All right. So we're good, really? We don't have to go down through each one?
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, I'm just...
I didn't like the logic of some of them, but, you know, it is what it is. Okay. Are we ready to entertain? But I'll say one more thing, just because. No, I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it so you all know what I'm thinking, you know?
For the record.
For the record.
Are there any community issues with drainage and soil and what? Go ahead.
No, that is, that is it. And for the record, there hasn't been any concerns about the drainage, the soil, or I guess air quality in that area.
No. And one thing I'll point out, Mr. Arnovitz kind of made mention to it earlier, there was planned a detention pond in that area. And it was determined really that it didn't need to exist, which is why it was allowed to be modified down the south. Now, should a significant amount of impervious surface come, then, yeah, I think detention pond's a good idea. But the quality of the soil is such that it really does, yeah, it does not have some of the typical stormwater issues that you see elsewhere.
All right.
It's basically a gravel pit.
Yeah, it sucks right into the ground.
And goes to where we don't know, which is why I care about those little forever chemicals coming.
Well, I will, I will say, I know the public portion's closed, but, you know, originally, half this park was supposed to, everybody was supposed to have their own detention basins on their property. And it was never enforced. The county didn't enforce it, the township didn't enforce it. We were supposed to be given plans in advance before construction was done. We weren't given plans. So we had situations where the PUD wasn't followed by any of the jurisdictions. And that's one of the reasons I were here too, that, you know, we'd like to make sure that it's all clean. And, you know, we don't, because originally, half the park, they wanted to make sure that if somebody had a chemical spill or something in there, like, that they could shut off the detention basin or stop the flow. The other half wasn't that way. They wanted it all flooded one pond. So it's been all over the board. It's been 30 some years, so...
That will be discussed at site plan level now, I guess. Okay. One other thing that's on my mind, because you all brought it up.
I'll bring it up.
No, no, I'm just going to tell you. So you said that anybody who received the letters, you would think, would be here, and that by them not being here, you're assuming that there's a problem?
No.
Or not a problem. There's acceptance.
Silence is acceptance.
Silence is acceptance. And what I will say to that is that the assumption to that is that there is knowledge. Not knowledge that the zoning is going to take place, but knowledge of the consequences of that zoning change. And so therefore, I just want to make sure that you understood that I think that way. Okay, I'm done.
I'm ready.
Make a motion, Bob.
We missed you.
Yeah. One meeting.
Why'd you do that?
Love to you.
I'll make a motion that we approve from case number 831 as presented, with no modifications. I guess that's, since I don't want to need to...
I'll second.
As presented, right?
As presented.
Presented with no modifications.
I'll second.
Okay.
Mr. Jeff Brown?
Aye, yes.
Mr. Robert Geis?
Yes.
Mrs. Ann Salter?
No.
Mrs. Kristen?
Don't you do this to me.
Why are you doing, there's like four of us.
I know.
Okay, yes.
Any more?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Next on the agenda is a review in a minute for the June meeting.
We were all recently...
Received those, the cast. Martha Moore.
Well, because you're all, emotions, because you broke on.
I'll make the motion that the June meeting be approved.
Okay, good. June meeting approved.
Second. Okay, a second.
Okay.
You're great. Thank you.
Mr. Jeff Brown?
I was not there for that one. Same.
Mr. Robert Geis?
Yes.
Mrs. Ann Salter?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen?
Yes.
Next is the August 4th meeting? Was that it?
I can't make a motion on that one.
Make a motion when we approve the, say, as written.
I'll second.
You're on.
Mr. Jeff Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Robert Geis?
I guess I'll abstain. I was in...
Mrs. Ann Salter?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Horton?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Nothing else is left on our agenda, is there? Any announcements, anything before we adjourn?
You know, I'll take this opportunity, and as you know, we've begun our comprehensive land use plan update process. We had our first steering committee meeting. Ann is a member of the steering committee. I think it went really well. I think it was a group that was engaged and interested. Something that's going to come out of probably our second meeting here in October is we're going to start asking steering committee members to hold little mini activity sessions where we're trying to gather information from the public. So I think this is a great opportunity to have you guys start to maybe think about that. You know, Kristen, I know you're in your HOA at Hunter's Ridge, so that might be a great opportunity to maybe branch out to them and get the opinions of that group. That's kind of what I'm asking you to think about in the meantime. I think at our next meeting in October, I should have a lot more information about what that'll look like. But if any of you are in, you know, community groups, or a church group, or, you know, anything where you're gathering with groups of people, I'd like you to maybe think about volunteering to lead a calling, you know, a meeting in a box. You're provided all the materials. You're provided with, you know, kind of a script. It's a short exercise to gather information. So I'd just like you to think about what that might look like for you over the next month or so until we meet in October. It's not a requirement, and I totally understand if it's not something you're interested in doing, but if it is something that you think you're interested in doing, let me know. We want all the opinions that we can get, all the data that we can get. So we're going to be relying on folks like you, the members of our VCA, even our trustees to be doing these kind of public engagement sessions. So I would appreciate it if you think about it, and thanks for your time.
All right.
Gavel, gaveling.
Oh, adjourn, adjourn, meeting is adjourned. When we meet again?